As customary, we always have a word of prayer before we start our meeting and I've asked Commissioner Bennett if he would lead us in this prayer.
Lord Jesus, we just thank you for each and every day, Lord, and we thank you for the blessings that you bring into our life each and every day, Lord. Lord, we pray that you continue to bless us as we go through our lives. Lord Jesus, and today's a very special day in our country, it's Veterans Day, and Lord, we just pray that you'll be with all of those that have died for our country and our freedoms in order for us to be here tonight, Lord, and just please be with their families to give them peace and comfort and understanding, Lord. Lord, we just can't say enough about our country and all you do for us each and every day. And Lord, we just pray that you'll let us get through this evening with the county's business, be with us as each of us travel home tonight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Let's all stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. Call the Hart County Board of Commissioners, November the 11th, business meeting to order. I'd like to welcome each of you here that's here in person, or if you're watching by HTC Channel 3 or our YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners. We welcome all of you. First of all, we need to approve the agenda.
Yeah, we've got several additions to the agenda. Under invited guests, I forgot to put KCI Technologies down. Have Jimmy here with them, he'll speak under invited guests. Under old business, at 12D, we got a real approved amended rate, I had to drop it a couple more thousands of mil. So we re-approved all those things, rollback rate, the sales tax rollback, and the PT-35. So that's back on there under DE and F. And under G, I need approval of the board for the chairman to sign a letter of intent for the 2026 flyover photo. It's in the budget, it's already budgeted, I just need the board approval and sign that agreement.
All right, can we get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh vote. All right, we'll move on to approve the minutes of previous meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes of the October 28th regular meeting?
Motion approved, 10:28, 25 regular meeting minutes.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Teasley, any discussion?
Just one point of clarification, under 15, changing the job description of the pay grade, we also changed the job description too. On page four in the minutes, second paragraph.
Me and my motion are there amended?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Teasley, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh vote. We'll move on to our called meeting on November the 5th for the mileage rate vote, any additions or corrections there?
I make a motion and we approve 11:05 call meeting.
We got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh vote. All right, now we'll move on to remarks by invited guests and committees and authorities, we do have Mr. Jimmy Withrow here with us from KCI Technology. We have met with Mr. McDuffie and Mr. Barron. Terrill and I have met with them and we've asked them to come back and share with the board their expertise on doing road studies. So we'll turn the floor over to you to start, Jim.
Thank you, thank you very much. Again, I'm Jimmy Withrow, KCI Technologies, I've been with KCI for almost nine years. I'm a retiree from Georgia Department of Transportation, which is where we came up with this program. We were looking at ways that we could work with cities, counties, different entities about introducing them to the systems that we'd use. And there are several of us who go there with Joe and even Todd, that had used the PACES program with the state of Georgia, which is just a roadway evaluations program. It's kind of a real deep, long, exaggerated program for what most people may think. When you're dealing with the state of Georgia and as many roads as we've got and these lane miles we have, it works out well for counties like Hart or Stevens or Bank or Trail, but it's for any of the rest that you can do it. If we can condense it, it makes it better. We also have a large group in KCI that deals with asset management. So we took what we knew from the PACES evaluation, added it to the asset management group, and introduced the GIS capabilities into it. So we take a GIS map, and what we do is, and we'll be looking at Stevens County today, where we take one from Stevens, or we took Stevens County, or we take one from Hart County, and we turn that map over to our asset group. They take the map and break it down into segments, and what you're looking at on the map is a finished project, or a finished project of it broken down into segments. When they finish, we use color coding because it makes it easy for us to understand them and easy for people to look at it and see what we're talking about. Instead of just numbers, you can look at colors and identify them easy. It starts out all pink, as we enter there to do the assessments, we do these as an on-the-ground assessment. We go to each segment, write it, look at all of the stresses that we can identify there, we get out and walk through part of it, again, recording the stresses. And if I go too fast on this, there's a lot to it, you all just slow me down and tell me if you want to look at something more. But each one of these colors identifies a signal we looked at. If we go to a red one, as we look at them, you can open up, and it shows you the, whoop, I closed it up. It will show you the assessment that we went through, we look for all the main distresses on them, we look for rutting, for load cracking, for block cracking, for edge distresses, for reflective cracking, for patches, potholes, we count the number of patches, potholes, include that in it. All these numbers go back to our GDOT formula, we use that for the places for GDOT, use all these. Each one of these has a certain number associated to them, and they will all be tracked off, they all start at 100 scale. And as you log those stresses, it's various levels of those stresses, it brings that score down and creates an overall rating for you. When we do this, we create it so you can click on the map, you can get it, we take pictures, you can click on the pictures, it blows up for you. This is web-based, so it's always interactive, once we're done with it, we turn it over to the city, the county. It creates, if you want to print off an assessment for this road, we create it with the county seal, or whatever county it is or city, and it gives you a complete assessment of it, with the ratings involved with it. Now, what makes ours a little different, and there's these projects here out there, they're all replaced now, some people come and do a video of it. It seemed like a little overkill, so we like to do still boots on the ground and examine the roads ourselves, so we know where the numbers are coming from that we put in there. You can query through these if you ever need, and you're looking for to see which roads are really needing resurfacing this year. Where's my targets at that I want to take care of? Once we finish up, you can come and identify them, I'll pick an easy one here, we'll just use overall ratings. We'll set one overall rating, that is less than, a 60 rating is a failed rating, so we're going to set below 60. We'll add it, and with that, you notice how our map changed, we lose everything off the map, except for those routes that are below 60. Now, all that falls into the bottom, you can scroll across them, pull them up, if we want to export this, it's just a click, you export it out to a, just a standard Excel spreadsheet, and start past now. If you were looking for, I know when we talk about these, we talk about preventive maintenance as well, we talk about resurface. If you have some that your county crews want to get involved with, with different types of preventive maintenance, patches, potholes, crack sealing, you can navigate through those, you can say, okay, how many roads have this many potholes, we count the number of potholes, and you can identify it through that. If it was crack sealing, you'd say, how many roads have a certain level between 85 and 70 on level two block cracking? You can break it down to that, pull that spreadsheet out, and it'll show you those roads that you really need to look at for crack sealing.
How many different levels of cracking do you have?
We've got, we do three levels of crack sealing. There's four levels on load cracking, three levels on, I said crack sealing, I'm sorry, block cracking. Three levels on block cracking, four levels on load cracking. And we identify all of them, we've got the rutting that we identify, everything is noted too that if you get.
So go ahead, elaborate more on the cracking evaluation, what criteria, how you're categorizing it.
Okay, cracking, and this will just, again, if I get too long on it, just tell me, when I start talking about this, I get.
No, we find, we ask the question.
Okay, block cracking, if I look for block cracking, two block cracking, two different types, block and rut. The load cracking is in the wheel rutting, you have wheel running, run down the road, you see cracks that run with wheel ruddings. That's usually called load cracking, it's created by the truck traffic, heavy volume of pedestrian, I mean not pedestrian, but just private car, individual who come through their stop signs, they push on the brakes, it starts to rut. Those areas start to crack in there. Well, when you've got a single run of a crack in there, it's like a level one, it starts to run this way. If it starts to branch out from that single crack, it works its way up to level two, it starts to get a lot more intense, and, gosh, it's hard for me to do it without using my fingers, but it'll start to cross itself up, then you've worked until level three, and really what you get into after that point is what people refer to as alligator crack. Alligator cracking can take care of block cracking or the load cracking, it's really difficult unless you know where it started. So you've got to be kind of experienced when you look at the road to figure out, did this alligator crack start as load or did it start as block, to identify. The block cracking runs, it typically runs across the road, what it's talking about is not so much the load, it's from a bottom-up cracking as well, I could describe it, it's from the base. There's something happening underneath the road, and it's got the road to start moving, you start to see those cracks develop in it. They'll do the same thing, they will run with the floor traffic, they'll run across the road, but they're much bigger cracks. When you start to see the big, looks like a, I think I made the thing like a tic-tac-toe, when you start to see the tic-tac-toe cracking in the roadway, that's when you've worked yourself into a level-two block cracking, it's really big. Level-three block cracking, they get really more condensed and it'll get you down to what's considered the alligator crack.
And that's the majority of what we're going to have.
Yeah, once it gets to the alligator crack.
It's in the load range, too.
You start getting a lot of those pop-outs occur, and once you start doing those, you get the water build up, and as the traffic hits them, all it's doing is pushing the water down in it, and the water looks for a way to come back out. And especially when it gets this time of year, any kind of water in, it's going to freeze, and once it freezes, the road's wanting, it's wanting to lock itself up more, and it'll just bust it wide open from the traffic.
So the directional cracking you were talking about is more longitudinal, latitudinal, too, I mean, and that's where we really need to start focusing efforts, to start sealing that up before it gets to that point where you've got the alligator cracking.
Absolutely, that's why I'm getting to the part about looking at the preventive maintenance part, if you catch them between an 85 or an 80 down to a 70, you can seal those off.
But the problem we have is on these secondary roads, they have so much truck traffic because of, you know, the logging, feed trucks, I mean, it's one of, that's probably the biggest problem that we have road-wise. These roads are not made for trucks that are running, you know, now over 80,000 pounds.
And it's wear and tell the roads, a lot, and when you get on county roads, the way they were built, they weren't intended to handle that much traffic. And then everything gravitated toward it. And once it did there, the base wasn't put in place on those roads to handle the load that comes across it. And that usually, it usually starts out more as a block cracking, and as I look at most of the counties that I've looked at around here, it's the block cracking more than it is the load cracking. You'd think the heavy loads would be showing more in wheel pass, but it's the block that shows up first, because there's not enough base underneath to handle the loads of the road. And it's just because they were paved with an inch and a half or two inches of asphalt, they were cut in there, they put a base in it, but it wasn't a deep base, and it wasn't built off GAB, and they didn't build it up and have like three layers of asphalt on top of it, like most of the state roads did, and then the topping, so it's a thinner asphalt. As you build these and you start to identify where these problems are, like these, I think, what is it, 14 routes they've got in here that are all red, these routes also did the same thing, they were heavy traffic. When we did Elbert County, you could, it was the marble trucks down that way, where they'd come out, you can see where the, you can see where those trucks running. When you looked at the map and you pulled them up, one of the commissioners that looked at it, and then he goes, oh yeah, I know why that was red. And he knew because there was a plan out there where they were hauling trucks in and out. And it's the same thing in Franklin County, you can tell which roads had the most chicken hen. Because that way was working on the road. It's a way to identify what problems are, to make the plan on what you want to do with it.
What does this cost?
Well, it's based off the centerline miles. Now, I haven't got a number on what your centerline miles at, so I don't have one, I've, gosh.
Centerline miles, now that's both lines.
That's both lines, because we just travel one lane, we look at everything in one lane, so we just charge by centerline miles.
Now, are you guys only doing the mapping for the communities you're working with, is it you just come in and do the map and that's it, or are you offering any type of other services along with that?
We can provide whatever you need after it's over with, because when we're done, we give you the information. If you want us to come back in and go through that information and help you out with what you need for resurancing, or which routes you can come in here and do your preventive maintenance on, whatever type it is you choose to do, depending on what the roads are, you know, we're open for it. For Joe and Todd, that's what they do for several different counties around here, they work with them, the ones that we've done this far, they fall right back in behind and go to work for them. Or if it's something that, Joe, cover your ears, if you didn't want to use us to do it, it's simple enough to look at it and you can make your own decisions based on the information you got. We don't try to sell you a book, there's a lot of companies out there, and I don't want to throw off on what they do, but they'll finish this and give you a five-year, six-year, or 10-year plan. You know, it's hard enough to figure out what you want to do next year to go ahead and get the budget set up on that. But when you start looking that far ahead, you're trying to predict what these roads are going to do, and it's nothing but a prediction, which means it's going to fall apart before you can.
But you guys can kind of tell from right now, if you have the roads and be able to recommend off the colors and the conditions of what would be a proper preventive maintenance plan, or what would be a proper repave plan versus just going out and ripping up and repaving every single road.
We'll switch to this, we also have a dashboard, you'll look at these. At the bar charts, I mean, this comes with what we deliver to you, this is all available to you. If you notice, we've got blue, green, yellow, purple, and red, that identifies where they are. The blue is 90 to 100%, those are the routes you don't have to worry about. You don't have, they're not going to be a concern for you for probably the next eight to 10 years, they're good shape. Green, they're dropping down a little bit, they're going to be good for another six, seven, eight years, you don't have to. When it starts to get to yellow, you need to be thinking about those, those are the ones that you need to be doing some preventive maintenance on. They've got to the point where they've got cracks that have opened up in them, they've got patches, potholes that are showing up, they're needing some help now. Maybe it's a deep patching, it's an intersection, and there's some rutting, go ahead and get that rutting out of that intersection now, get some deep patching in place, but it all shows up in the scores and in the assessments that we go through, so you can make a plan based off this. When it gets to the purple, they're to the point they need some help. Maybe it's, you spend part, and just throw these things out there, suggestions, you spend part of the money that you would've spent for resurancing this year, you spend it on some surface treatment. You get in there, the road's not falling apart yet, it's got some wider cracks, you get in there and you do a surface treatment, or you do a scrub seal on it, and pave over the top of it with a three-quarter inch lift of asphalt over the top of the surface treatment, that road's good for you for another four or five years, you can extend that life. While you take care of the ones in the red, the ones in the red, they need something now, they're the ones that would need to go to the top of the road, if they're 60 and below. Now, you can judge them as you rate them, some of them, some of them will get really low, I've rated some that, you know, that was an eight. And you get in there, there's not much good left in that, there's something you need to do. And then some at a 60 you might look at and say, you know, I could spend a little money on this right now, but I've got more that are lower that I need to take care of this year, because money gets a bit issue on everything. How much do I have that I can apply?
So you're looking at grade the roads, and then it's up to us to go forward with any other services, you're just going to give us the grade of all of our roads?
Exactly, we will give you what you see today with the dashboard, and we will give you the maps, we will tell you what condition they are in.
Mr. Barron, if you would, could you stand up next to the mics so the people at home could hear you?
What Jimmy's going to do, he's going to give you this program, he's going to do this for you. All right, then, if you want our help, which Terrill knows all what we do, but anyhow, we'll come in and if you want our help, and we'll help you figure, we'll start with the colors and all that he's got on there, and then we'll actually go out and look at what you need to pay next year. And, you know what I'm saying, the very worst ones, and we give you an estimate on what, how much patching it's going to take, and all, and give you a price of what you've got, what you're facing to spend next year, and then you pick, you know what I'm saying, then you pick from that.
So you keep up with all the local vendors and costs?
Yeah, and we do the inspecting and all, you know, once you, Todd does the packages for some of the counties, he'll do it all, bring it to you, hand it to you, you look at them, all the prices they desire.
Who is Todd?
Todd McDuffie. We do, we do this one you're looking at right now, is the last one, you don't know if this is Stevens County, this is actual, this is actual Stevens County, you look at that. And we do Everett County, we do Banks County, we do City of the Cove, we do City of Nevers, we do all of these that surround already, and help them with their packages with letting it, then we go out and make sure that all of it's done, you know what I'm saying, it's, but it's not tied too big, I mean, you know what I'm saying, we, you're not tied, you're not tied to hiring me.
Right, there's no contract here.
Which I already work for you anyhow, I'm the one who works on the bridges already. But anyhow, that's what I'm saying, we take this information and help you get through it.
You working on that Everett Highway Bridge, Seaview?
No, I work on your bridges, not the state bridges.
Oh, okay, I was wondering why it took you so long, didn't it?
I'm proud you clarified that. We want nothing to do with you, if you have anything to do with that bridge or Ross County Highway.
15 years ago, I worked the county.
They've been there two and a half years, it'll be three years in February, it'll be three years in February.
So you mentioned the long-range plans, like 10-year, 5-year, basically, you know, a 10-year plan is unrealistic because things change so often, you agree with that?
I agree with that.
A 5-year is kind of.
I think it's really iffy.
Yes, I agree with that too, but my point here, why I'm asking that question, is these roads change because of things that happen in a community that change. For example, we had over $5 million worth of road damage from the bridge on Highway 29 South that was well over four months that it was supposed to be to be changed. And we had roads that literally got destroyed, I mean, one road in particular, Farm Road, was basically went back to a gravel road, because of all the truck traffic and everything that was going through there, because the road was not made for that.
Yes.
GPS would take truck drivers through there. Um, but changes like that and with, with all the trucks that we have cutting through roads, we've got an ordinance and we try to enforce it, but we can't get everybody. My question is, how often does this, will this have to be updated?
Okay, yeah. As often as you want.
What would you recommend?
When you use it. What, with the state, when I worked for GDOT, we did this every year, again.
But you're, the state roads are built more for truck traffic than these secondary roads are that are in the county.
Yes, some of them are and, and some of them, you know, they were built in the fifties and sixties and they're still using those same roads. Now, what I would recommend for this, I tell everybody when I do this. We don't need to redo this next year and I don't even think we need to do it the next year. Which hurts me getting to come back and do it. But three or four years, it gives you an opportunity to work through the information you have here. Now, are they changing? Yes, they're changing. There's nothing you can do about it. And a lot of times when we do this, people are like. Okay, we, we just did this road. I want to make it a hundred now. Because they get caught up with looking at, at the numbers on this, this dashboard over here and start evaluating it. That overall rating for all the roads here in Stevens County was eighty seven point three. Which is very good. It's very good when you hit a county, it gets that much. I don't think I've ever done one that, that's ever made it into the nineties. This is probably plus one of the highest ones I've ever done. So it's very good. But if they started paving the roads down and saying, well, we want to add those paved roads back into this and not do a full blown assessment. What happens is you start skewing the numbers on it because all the positive numbers start showing up. These that are in yellow, they're continually dropping. The ones that are in purple are continually dropping. Greens continually dropping. Even the blues that are writing out between ninety and one hundred, they're not getting better. I mean, many roads are just like us. As we age, you know, our bodies break down on us. Roads do the same thing. I, I, I use that in a class I taught with GDOT and it's about the elasticity of the road. It starts out, it can handle the weight, it can handle the pressure. Because it's, it's got so much new blood in it, so to speak, because the emulsion is fresh and it's new. So it flexes and it moves. As it gets older, that emulsion starts to dry out. So what happens? Doesn't flex and move as much. It starts to crack and it starts to pop. And as it does that, the cracks start to show, the potholes start to show. The road starts to get, and it, it's just a lifespan. You can't stop it. But with the right kind of treatment, you can slow it down so that you can get it under control.
So every three to four years, would you say?
That, that's what I'm saying. The good thing about this program is we can, we can, we can layer it. When we come back in the next time, we use the same maps we had before. And, uh, and we just layer on top of it. So if we came here and we want to see this road. If I wanted to see South Avenue Lane, what it was when we did it in, um, let's say we did it next year for y'all in twenty twenty six. And we came back in twenty twenty nine and did it again, we would put it right on top of it. So when we pulled it up, it would show two different assessments. You could put those assessments together and, and you could, you could be the judge on how you work with them. How, how, what was it then and what is it now, so to speak. So we just, uh, we did the first one there, the City of Cove and laid it there. And a lot of theirs, you could look and see that they were, they were red, they were below sixty, but they got in there and resurfaced them. Some of them were up, up at the, uh, the blue between ninety, one hundred. There were a few of them that had already slipped. And they were, they were already to the green. And it was like four years later, I think about four years what we did at Cove already. I think it was four years. They'd already slipped down some. So it's an aging process by all of it. It's just being able to track it and, and see what's going on with it. That, that's what this gives you an opportunity. It's going to take a snapshot in time right now and we're going to show you what it is. But it's really the only snapshots you got. And not just ours, I'm talking to anybody that does it. It'll just be what it is right now. Can you predict what's going to happen three years from now? A bridge goes out and the traffic moves on it and your five year plan's out the window because you're having to take that money to rebuild this other road. And so everything you had is thrown off. So a year or two out, you know, you can figure out how to work the budgets and manage that and get that money set up.
So kind of a few more questions that go back to what I was talking about. You mentioned five year plans iffy, but you recommend in doing this every three or four years.
Right.
So you're going to rank roads and you're going to be able to pull up a report. If your road is number five this year. And then three years later, your road is still number five and others get pulled ahead of that. How are you going to justify that when you tell people that your road is number five on the paving list? We did away with paving lists because of those situations.
I understand.
And things, because people felt like we were misleading them because we had a paving list. And if you're number five now, um, you know, things change as we just talked about.
Absolutely.
And you're still number five five years from now. You know, you're going to feel like you've been misled by the board.
How long do I have to stay at number five?
But, I mean, but the problem is. The problem is these changing conditions and things that happen that nobody has any control of. You have, we've got large poultry farms now that have ten and twelve houses on them. And there's a lot of truck traffic that goes through some of these secondary roads. A lot of these secondary roads don't have more than four inches of base under them. I mean, they are old tar and gravel roads that have held up well beyond their life expectancy.
I love the tar and gravel roads by the way. Tar and gravel will keep your flexibility under.
They hold better, better.
Hold much longer than anything else.
I agree with you.
It's one of the best things. Anytime you get a surface treatment involved, it's great for the roads.
What is the algorithm as far as ranking? How is, what?
Now, as far as ranking, now I don't give you a rank. I just, I just show you what the roads are.
But the score that you, that you're generating, yes. I mean, how does that? What's, what's weighted the most, the least? How's, how's this algorithm work?
Well.
Go back to the cracking.
We probably don't have enough time to get into where all the numbers come from and I would probably mess it up really.
But no, as far as where I'm going, if you paradeed out your groups as far as your, what I'm going to call your failure or.
Yes, the stress is involved.
Needs to be addressed. Which, what would be your top three as far as it affects your out, your output?
The biggest one that will affect them, if I told you you had a level four load cracking. And you had twenty percent on, on, on a mile long road. Which we break these things down into mile long segments as close as we can. Just depends on length of the road. And we don't want them too short. We don't want them too long, but we shoot for a mile. So if I told you you had a twenty percent or twenty five percent load cracking on a mile long road, that road's in trouble. Uh, the, the, the level four load cracking, it's like a death sentence in a road. It's you've got a major problem. You might could cut it out if it's in a small enough segment there that you could get it out of the way. But there's probably been enough damage to the adjoining sections on the, on the beginning and the end of it that it's going to affect those. You can cut this part out and it's already affecting these other parts. So that's fine. When we get to, anytime you see the alligator cracking, even a level three load, load cracking is the worst. It seems to push down on the road and it pushes out more on the road. It causes more damage. Once you get into a level three block cracking, again, you've, you've got the alligator set up there on the road. And anytime you've got that, too many cracks. And I, I just taught a class of, of winter maintenance to, to GDOT last week. And we talked about the precipitation on the road and we talked about how the brine works. Well, the water works the same way brine does. It, it's path of least resistance. Once it rains, that water looks for a place to go and where does it find it finds the cracks. And it will go into cracks to those cracks and potholes and then you just pile up and pile it. All it's doing is going into the base of the roadway. Once you get into the base of the roadway and you start softening it up. There's not much you can do to fix it. You can pave over it, you can do whatever you want to, but your bridge in that gap, it's got to come out and you've got to get the base out at the same time. Same thing will hurt you if you've got a high shoulder on a road. A high, I started to walk. I get started talking about roadway maintenance and I get like a spritzer sometimes. I want to pace it forward. But a high shoulder on a roadway do the same thing. There's no place, there's no release for the water. Except it stays on the road. And if it stays on the road, what's it looking for? It's looking for a crack. It's looking for somewhere to go. It doesn't want to pond that. And if it does make, it's going to saturate that shoulder. And where does it go to after that? Back underneath the roadway. So that high shoulder that you had and that piling of the roadway, what eventually is going to happen? It's going to start to break off. You're going to get the edge distress that starts out first and then it's going to eat its way back into the main road. The, the first thing if you want to start on preventive maintenance, clip your shoulders. Get the water, get the shoulders cut back so that the water doesn't stay up on the roadway any at all. You want it all to drain off all the way. Clean out all your drains, clean out around your bridges, clean out anything guardrail you got. No standing water because it, it's detrimental to the life cycle of the road. That, I know that took us off what the question you'd asked, but the, the level four load cracking, level three block cracking, level three load cracking.
You agree, we get the alligator cracking, we're basically into life.
That, that's it. You're looking, there, there's not much you can do. If it's, if it's, if it's concentrated, you can take it out, but you're talking about taking it out. How much are you going to take out? How much deep patching do you want to do before you have to red pave?
We're out here paving these roads now. We have sections we have to mill out altogether.
Yeah. Even, even if you go in there to pave the road. I would never say that you just sit up and start paving and resurfacing it. First thing you want to do is identify the spots on that road that need to come out. If it's already got patches, if it's already got potholes, look at those patches. The community that I live in, they like to patch the roads that we live in, but they never look beyond the problem. It's, it's those connected, like I said, the before and after, when you really get those bad spots. So you can see if, if, if the cracking's already gone, go ten feet beyond before, ten feet beyond after. Because it's already done damage. That water has gotten in there. And all you're doing is setting up a, a really hard spot right here and a really soft spot on both ends of it that might have caused a problem.
Yep. One last question. What would be the education and experience requirements for somebody to get out here and, and grade the roads like what you're talking about?
Let's see, I've got. You count what I got? I'm pushing thirty three. I got forty one years.
No, I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about as, as general rule, what would be the minimum qualifications of a person to do this and what experience level?
They would have to know what they're looking at. And as far as minimum qualifications, I'm sure.
I mean, it's not going to be.
I started readying the first roads I went to school.
For example, a road department supervisor. That gets out here and marks these things and things like that. I mean, somebody who understands a cracking, somebody who understands the loading, somebody who understands what alligator cracking is. And can, and basically you're measuring how much, what, what area is affected. I'm just wanting to, it's not somebody, it doesn't take a college degree to do this.
If it did, I wouldn't be here today. Definitely, I'm not.
I mean, somebody with.
I got, I got mine there. We would go to what we call Paces Training at GDOT. And it would be a week long training. We'd go through looking at all kinds of cracks, all kinds of, of distresses and deficiencies of the roadways. And we would go back and then we would start doing it. If we were assistants somewhere on a roadway, we'd start going and assessing the, the area that we were assigned. Usually five, six, seven counties and how many state routes fell in those counties. So it, would it be like a lifetime? No. But it is, it's a struggle when you first start to get, get some years behind you. And it's experience looking at it. Like I said, sometimes you'll look at, at alligator cracking out there and, and you're like. Where did it start and why is it here? Now, if you've got somebody that's been doing it a long time, they can look and say, hey, this started, I can tell you, it began here, it probably started as, as a, as load cracking. And then it got crossed up with some block cracking in the area and it just grew. Or they can look at the road and say, I don't think there's ever been any load cracking on the road. I can't find any kind of traits that lead to believe it. It's just all based off block cracking. So. It's experience being on the road more than it is anything else. And the more times you've looked at it and identified it, the easier it becomes.
I think you guys have done a good job with explaining this and I know I asked you questions.
That's where we come in, in the identifying what you got patched and that, that kind of stuff. That's what we do. And, and it's, uh, and it's, you go back to where you was talking about a road that was rated, you know. If you had five loads that you identified that need to be paved, it all goes back to the money. Because you probably not going to have the money to do all five of them this year.
That's right. And that's what happens year after year after year.
Sure, that's all, that's all you do.
That, I, I just want everybody to understand, just because this is, if we go this route and we've got a ranking system. If your road's number one this year, um, or two years from now, whatever, things change. And there may be other, there's going to be roads that's going to jump up and I just don't want people to be misled.
That's the good thing that we've got a roadside. I don't have to rank them. I just evaluate.
But your evaluation.
We're ranking them now, but the problem is we don't have any data to go on.
We get out and ride them. That's what we do.
We've got a list. I mean, the list has been going on for.
So you can take the amount of lane miles we have and give us a quote as far as getting us a map like this with your percentage of the roads?
Yes.
So the process we do now, each commissioner submits their worst roads to, to the county administrator. And then we all get together and we go out and we ride every road on that list. And we identify based off of cracking, potholes and things like that, what roads need to be resurfaced. And then we take our money and that's how we work our way down.
Now, now one thing about that, as commissioner, I said, and I, I don't know now, now heart change broke up or y'all broke up and you've got certain.
We've got districts, yeah.
Certain.
But it doesn't matter. We take the worst roads.
Okay, that, that's, you know, there's some that, you know, my district's not getting any money.
That's the way it used to be. It used to be that years ago, the road money was spent twenty percent in each district. And there was one district that had five percent of the roads, but got twenty percent of the money.
So all their roads that were wonderful.
Yeah, not a dirt road in the, in the district. That was twenty years, twenty five years ago. That's all changed. So we, we hit the worst ones regardless of whose district. Because it's, it's taxpayers' money and it's taxpayers' assets that we're responsible for.
Exactly. And what this gives you is a way to identify for them. If anybody asks, well, why did you do these roads? Well, we can show you. We've got pictures of it. We.
And that's why we get out and ride them. So we all see them at the same time.
Yeah, that, that's what this does. That takes, that takes it off y'all.
It doesn't take it off of us. We're, this is our responsibility.
Yeah, I know. Well, this takes that off the board. This, this is going to give you a list of the worst.
It gives you a quality tool that you can, it, it's like, sometimes it is like. You see the end of a screw head there and you try to fix it with a flathead and it's really.
Well, I think the preventive maintenance is the key though.
That's right. I agree with that.
It always hits.
And I mean.
Clipping shoulders and getting, getting that water run out.
Lot of that is what we had last time.
Now, one thing I can tell you, you talked about saying that this is going to be one, two, three, four, five. We want to do, one of these are one through ten roads. Now, once you get preventive maintenance in there and you start looking at these things, some of these roads, you might go in there and crack some. Or you might go in and strip seal on a few spots of them. You get that preventive maintenance working because you've identified the areas that it will work on.
And it costs a whole lot less than resurfacing.
It does, but it also extends that life.
Exactly. That's what it is.
Yeah, the road was falling fast. It stopped and maybe another one has dropped load. So that, that's one of those things saying it's one through ten and like you said, you had one seventy five for a while. It, it could, it could stay there.
I just don't want, I just don't want the public to think that when we get a ranking system, that this is set in stone. I want to make sure everybody understands. And that's why I'm asking you guys, just like I asked the previous folks the same questions. Because I want them to hear that message to make sure that everybody understands that, you know, if we have something that sits at the top. Four or five and then things change, others may overtake it.
When you take a road that's seventy right now, who raised it? The guy raised it seventy. All right, now, uh, when it comes up next year, we start doing, getting red paved. Saying what, what road you're going to pave next year. That road is rated at seventy. It could be rated fifty next year. Very, and it can drop, you know what I'm saying? But it goes back depending on what kind of traffic it's on. You got two, three, four, five, you know what I'm saying? That plays into all that too.
But it depends on who your audience is.
As far as the taxpayers go. How long does this take you guys to, from start to finish where it's a deliverable product? Because just to kind of let you know, I'm sure you guys are aware, but we're in a bidding process and we've, we've been doing this for about six, seven months now. But we're in the phase now that it's time to get something enacted. So we're trying to figure out timelines of.
Once we get started, do you guys have a, I, I don't know the centerline miles.
It's around five hundred.
Well, it won't be that many because you've got dirt roads.
We got five hundred and twenty seven miles, but.
That's dirt roads.
That's dirt roads, okay, okay.
I'd say four, four twenty five, four fifty.
We, we would probably get it done in. Off the top of my head, I'm saying that probably like a ten day max, we could have it done.
How many people you got running around?
That's me. It's me. I, I am our staff. So, once, once we get started on it, I, I did Stevens County in like. Six or seven days. I got it done in six months. But I get started and I, I just, I don't stop. Whenever it gets time to, it gets dark and I can't see, then I stop and I start back the next day. And just go through it. And I've been looking at them. It's, I started, started a minute ago. I've been doing this now for like thirty nine years. So when I see the cracks and I start riding them, I start to understand that segment and then it moves on to the next one. And when you've got a road and it starts building off segments, you start to understand a little bit more what the patterns are out there.
So you, you work with Jason on?
Jason Holland?
Stevens County?
Yes, 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 yes. And they, again, they had-
They do a great job with their roads. They do their own paving, just so y'all know. They do their own paving. They got their own paving crew. They do it all.
That eighty-seven is one of the top ones that I've ever seen out there. You know, I did, I did a city in South Georgia this summer right before I did Stevens County. And I think they were like a sixty-something percent. Most cities, counties, whatever, they wind up seventies or sixties. I've never done one I think that was below sixty percent. But there's usually a lot more red on them than what you see on this. And it's nothing, when you see it, the first one I did, I'm like, oh my goodness. But it's nothing to be ashamed of. I mean, it's just what you have. And this offers you the option, as I was saying with the screw, it gives you the Phillips head, the fifth Phillips head, and the flathead, the fifth flathead. You can figure out what it's gonna take to get you where you want to be and how you want to work on it. It gives you that shot now, so that you can see it. And then whether it's us or somebody else, I don't, I don't like the plans. You know, we could make one up. We've had a couple that asked if we could make them up a three-year plan for it. And Todd McBeffer, who John I mentioned before, Todd, you sat down and made one three-year plan for it based off the information that was there. And we can do it, but it's really based on what your needs are. You know what you've got. You know what your funding is. You know what you can do with your public works department. And you can put them to work and start working on this model for you. Not that they don't know what's going on out there now, but sometimes it's easier when you see it and you start identifying. And you condense that workload down by saying, hey, if we started with crack seal, we could get this much, this much done on crack seal this year. And it's for cheap expense. Then we identify the spots where we can come in and strip seal. Any plan you've got, whether it's the one we offer or it's one somebody else, all it is is a tool for you to use. Is it gonna change? It will change as it goes through there. Does it need to be done again? Yes, it'll be done again. Because this is today. When you talk about three years from now or four years from now, if you come back in and do this again, it will change then and look different. Hopefully, it'll be better than what it was before because of what you've done that stopped the fall. Because again, it's all aging and it's all, it's all getting worse day by day.
Take your miles and work us up a price.
I got one question. When was the last time we had something like this completed?
Twelve, fifteen years ago.
Did it for you?
He completed everything.
He was a county, yeah, he was a county administrator's wife.
He was building his plan up and he tried.
Yeah, I guess.
But he was the county administrator's wife.
They got stuff over the county.
So if the board's good with this, we'll ask Terrell if he could get the mileage to Mr. Tommy. And then you can work us up a price and maybe we can take a vote on this next meeting.
Would we not have to put it out for bid?
Huh?
Put it out for bid.
Not specifically this part.
Do what now?
We'd need to put it out for bid. Specifically this part, because this is, unless I'm misunderstanding what we're doing.
We're just giving a quote.
I understand. But is it fair to them to give us a quote and it become public knowledge and not anybody else that we're gonna talk to? That's my point.
This is a service though.
I understand. But my point is, if there's somebody else that we end up talking to and these guys give us a quote, that becomes public record and somebody can find out what they quoted. That's my whole point. If we're gonna do it, let's open it up for everybody and then just take them and be done with it. That way, we don't have to worry about-
I think you're gonna be very satisfied with this quote.
I've seen it before. I mean, that's what GDOT's been using for years.
I mean, and plus, the people that they're using are all from GDOT, retired or-
My point is-
I don't think we're doing anything illegal here.
I didn't say you're doing anything illegal. I'm just saying it's not fair to them. If they give us a quote and then we talk to somebody else and say they want to give us a quote and they watch this meeting and they see that these guys did it, they give an open records request, they get a copy of the quote, and then they know what they did. That's all I'm saying.
You gonna do an imitation of a quote on this?
I just think you just need to put it out for bid for thirty days and be done with it.
Just do an imitation of a quote.
I thought you guys were in the original bid pack. We've already put this out for bid.
No, they were not.
They-
They were under, they were under the original bid pack.
Yeah, we're already contracted with them.
Why did we put this out for bid in the first place? Why don't we just hire them if they were already on retainer with us?
We worked with them.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. Why aren't we-
So we need the quote off of you for this particular project.
Putting stuff out for bid when you guys are already associated with us.
It's just being over, it's just being over.
Your county purchasing policy's gonna require it to be bid.
It's been a line item on our contract. So we all account.
What's the county purchasing policy say? Just trying to be fair.
I understand, but I don't think we're gonna, I think we're just throwing hoops to give a quote.
We didn't reach that amount. I wanted to basically get a couple hundred dollars.
Well, we already know what the contract, what the price was for the other company.
They didn't give us a price.
I thought they did.
No, they did not give us. They're not talking about money.
They didn't talk to us as long what he did, but I ain't never sent a figure on it.
What's the company you guys are talking about?
The LNK. They sent you bids.
They're in the bid pack.
So they did, we all reuse these-
Because they seen so much on there. We was wanting so much that they were scared to bid on it. They didn't know how to bid on it.
According to purchasing policy, anything greater than ten thousand dollars sealed bids shall be required through legal advertisements. Bids will be opened by the Hart County BLC at a regular scheduled BLC meeting. Awarding of the bids will be by the Hart County Board of Commissioners at a BLC meeting. Bidding will not be conducted unless approved in advance of a public meeting of the Hart County Board of Commissioners.
I think State of Georgia's a hundred thousand.
That's the county's policy, Jim.
How we know it's above two thousand dollars?
This is what governs us too.
How we done?
I mean, that's the thing.
We won't know till we get a quote.
The State of Georgia's a hundred thousand.
All right. So if you want to nitpick it, one thousand and one dollars to ten thousand requires sealed bids to be delivered to the county clerk with a minimum forty-eight hour response time provided to bidders. Solicitations of these bids may be through legal advertisements, direct mail, telephone, or email. The department head slash constitutional officer shall consult with the county administrator prior to bidding. Bids will be opened by the Hart County BLC at a regular scheduled BLC meeting. Awarding of the bids will be by the Hart County Board of Commissioners at a BLC meeting. That's your purchasing policy that this board adopted. It also says that if, you know-
Chairman, I don't know what he's reading. We don't have this in our packet. I mean, we have no input from the administrator or legal counsel here, so I mean, he could be reading.
Kim, do you- Mr. Kim, you got anything?
I don't have the purchasing policy memorized.
Here it is. There it is, right here.
I believe what he's saying.
Well, we can't go off of hearsay or believe.
It's not hearsay. Yep, there it is.
I don't know that we're purchasing anything here. We get the quote.
Purchasing a service, guys.
We already had their service.
If I look something up on my phone, you're thinking of gospel.
The purpose, the purpose of the-
We don't have the opportunity to put it out.
This was approved by the Hart County Board of Commissioners, May twenty-four, twenty-eleven. Purpose, the Hart County Board of Commissioners seeks to procure goods and services with an open competitive system. Conflicts of interest, no employee or elected official of the county may bid on a county contract if that individual exercises decision-making authority or recommendations with regard to that contract and/or award of that contract. And it says, purchasing procedures, zero to four hundred ninety-nine dollars. Bidding is not required. However, telephone bids are recommended and records kept of the bids. Five hundred to a thousand, require at a minimum telephone bids and associated documentation. Award is at the discretion of the department head slash constitutional officer. And then it goes on down, one thousand to ten thousand. I told you that. I read that. And then there is a stipulation on here that says, deviation from this policy for purchases less than ten thousand dollars shall be at the discretion of the county administrator. Deviation from this policy for purchases greater than ten thousand is at the discretion of the board of commissioners. That is our policy. That's what we operate off of, so.
I understand. We don't bid out a set of loaded tires. We buy them from people we already do business with. We already do business with these people.
Well, you get some of that stuff at state contract pricing.
Are we currently bidding, bidding the bridge workout?
We buy them, we always buy, we buy them with materials and all that. They do the looking, engineer.
But we bid that out every time?
No.
Okay.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We already have a service. I don't, I just don't, I see where Commissioner Dorsey's at down there.
In other words, we don't pay KCI ten thousand dollars to do a bridge. We pay Turner Concrete X number of dollars for the concrete we use. We pay Woodland for the gravel. And we pay him to go and seal, check, keep the job checking it done. We pay him for his professional service.
And that's what, that's what's on the contract.
Right. The contract is basically a retainer, two hundred bucks a year or something other, just to keep them, our name on their list.
We weren't making a decision anyways. We're gonna have to deliberate on this. So we just need to leave it like it is. And then we'll figure out what we're gonna do next meeting.
I just, I don't have a problem with what they're doing. I just want to make sure we're fair to everybody, is all I'm saying. And that's all we're-
We did is put it up for bid.
But this is a different scope than what we put out the bid.
What it was, the difference kind of-
No, I was saying, it could have been-
They had a breakdown on that other sheet.
Yeah, it did. The LNK.
Everybody down for this part and another part.
Right.
But I'm-
I remember the breakdown.
If that's the case, you gotta, you need to look at your bids then.
It is. I actually went and blew back up a cheaper one than the eight thousand.
Eighty-five, eighty-four something, what?
Eighty-four.
That's my point. It's already been bidded out. These folks didn't bid on it because of the enormous requirements. They didn't know that they could meet all these requirements. And so therefore, they didn't bid on it.
It was all the other stuff that the tax and that bid packet, if they wasn't in it.
Right. So I see no problem with them giving us a quote. I mean, we didn't like any of the other quotes.
I mean, I wouldn't say that. I would just say-
Kim, are we putting ourselves in a legal position where we can be challenged?
I think that we just need to take the presentation as is tonight. We're not making a decision tonight. And then we will, you know.
Do you want to advertise it for thirty days? Is that what you're saying?
I think you need to just put it out for bid, what we're talking about.
We've already bided this out before.
But that's, you advertise it for thirty days, that's what you're doing.
The point of it is to drag it out some more.
No, it's not.
That's the point.
No, it's not.
So I don't see a problem. We just need to-
That's not my point about dragging it out. I just want to make sure we're fair and equitable to everybody. That's the whole thing.
We're not making a decision tonight taking a contractor. So I don't, I still don't understand why we're kicking this around back and forth.
Well, we invited these people here just like we invited the others.
There's somebody else out there that could do it. That's the thing. Kim, are we putting ourselves in a position legally where you cannot defend us?
I'm aware of where y'all-
Thank you.
-get out the bid. And those bids are there. I mean, y'all want to reduce the scope down and be more comfortable.
Well, the scope was provided in those bids. It's already been determined what the other companies would do it for.
So are you-
Road survey.
So my point, my point here is these guys are gonna use the Paces system. That's what we were just told. So that's what you need to put out for bid, to come in and do it and use this system or whoever wants.
That was what the LNK did. Paces system.
That isn't, it's not what they showed in there.
That's what he said.
That's not what he said.
They used the same-
Let me clarify. We use the Paces system basis on it. We've had to make modifications to it.
I said, I said Paces are equivalent. So that's what I said.
Okay. I didn't want anybody to get the wrong understanding. We use exactly the same system.
You guys did a great job on the presentation. I'm just trying to be fair and equitable.
That's fine. That's what we're here for. Just to answer questions and put it out there. You know what we have. And we're more than willing, if it's a bid or if you want to put it back out there, we bid back on it.
I'll make a motion that we just put it back out for bid for thirty days with what we've talked about tonight.
With a different scope than last time with this scope?
Yeah, just this evaluation stuff and the ranking, rating system. Do we use Paces or an equivalent system?
Well, we don't have to specify their system that you-
I said Paces are equivalent. So-
Why do we have to specify their system at all?
Because the GDOT's system is a Paces system. That's what they use. But they've done some enhancements.
So all these other people gonna come in and specify their systems?
Or an equivalent, or something equivalent. That's what I said.
Well, he said he's not using Paces. They modified it. Is that what you said?
The motion in the spring included Paces or Licon system is what I made.
My motion stands. And that's why I said an equivalent.
I can make it. I'll put two if I have to. All right, we got a motion on the floor to put this out for bid for thirty days using the Paces system or equivalent. Now, have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
So that means we'd have this back by January the one.
Why didn't y'all make this motion when the other crew was here a few weeks ago? When we knew that they were coming right up?
Because we said there were gonna be others coming to present.
It's just interesting that we're, that you guys are all of a sudden want to rebid something we've already bid.
I'm just wanting to follow the policy.
Well, these people already, we're on their retainer. I don't know why we have to do anything to get them to add to the service. They're providing a service. So why can't we just ask them to give us a price on this, just like anything else we would ask? If we ask the engineer on a bridge, they give us a service, they give us a bid, right? Give us a price. All right, there's no difference here. There's no difference.
They figure out all the material stuff, give us that.
Yeah, well, I said, there's no difference. I don't see any difference here in that.
In the spring, instead of a bid packet being put together and put out for bid with a list of, you know, a list of wants, we should have just solicited you guys as a professional service. You were already working with us and you could have provided exactly what we're looking for. But instead, we've spent the past literally half year, if not more, looking through bids and soliciting bids or something. We probably, you said you could have done it fourteen days. I mean, we could have already had this map done before July.
Now, that's exactly what you're talking about. That's what Todd and Jeff did for numerous counties around in the city.
But the last group did Madison County's work. So that's how this came about.
And as I said, there are numerous ones out. And when we first started this, it was a limited, limited pool of people that could have gone to it. And there are so many now, that somebody that do larger ones. And I don't know what you're gonna do. I warned up. But there's some that'll come in, they will run a video truck through your whole county. They'll do video. They'll take you back and they can run all kinds of algorithms through it and come back with numbers and information of what this is gonna be and what that's gonna be. Everything changes on it. That would be all. And be careful in those, just because prices change all the time. So all those estimates are making change all the time.
And as far as the thirty days, we're not gonna do any paving. We're not even talking about T-spots to add to the first of the year. So I don't see where thirty days is gonna hurt. It's just a matter of given the tax-
It's the process.
Just given the tax rate.
The attorney there said she'd feel better about it.
And the attorney said she felt better about it too. There's nothing wrong with it. If they don't bid on it, they don't bid on it. It's over and done with. That will be the action.
I don't see how we're gonna get anybody any different that's gonna bid on it than what we're gonna do.
So this is the only bid that comes in which we're notorious to do. When one comes in, we rebid that.
You've done what you had to do. We've talked about it. Everybody had an opportunity. If anybody else bids on it, you got the one bid, we go forward with it.
Well, I've seen one bid come in a lot of times as we've been back out.
Rebid it out again. Rebid it out again. And then we're gonna wait until twenty, twenty-eight.
I mean, you've talked about this. I'm just-
And then we can rebid it out one more time.
I said, put it out for thirty days was my motion. So.
All right, we got a motion. Second. Any other discussion? We'll call for a vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Two, all opposed.
Even with the county attorney saying that she's uncomfortable defending this.
These people buy the service. All right, we have them on retainer. I feel fine. I'm not a retainer.
We're not making a decision tonight.
Kim, you need to speak up.
We're just getting a quote.
If I can explain, if we'd never put it out for bid, I think it would be a problem. But now that you exposed everybody else's bids and you're asking another party for a different quote, I think you need to give everybody else the same opportunity to go back and redo their bid again. If I bided first and I got my quote exposed and then If I bided first and I got my quote exposed and then someone else could come in without having to bid and come in under my quote, I'd be unhappy. And that's just the only part that I'm thinking, can, can I really defend that if I had to? I'm not sure I could.
What if we end up going with one of the others that have already submitted a bid? What if we went with them?
They need to rebid it. You're rebiding it. They need.
But what if we, but what if we don't wanna rebid? What if we wanna go with someone who's already submitted a bid that, that we opened up a month or so ago?
Well, you could, because you bid it about.
But if we are, but if we submit it to go out for rebid, then, and we go back next meeting and go with the original bids.
We can go back with the original bids and rebid it again.
That's what I'm saying. So if we are gonna put it out for rebid, I mean, that's, my state is waiting to the next meeting and then deciding if we're gonna put it out for rebid or not. Because what happens if we decide not to go?
It was a breakdown with the other group.
Yeah, it's Lina.
And, and.
Lina Adam.
And I'm not sure if it, and that's why I personally wanna go back through those bids and look at them again. Because I'm not sure if it was eighty-five, the lowest bid for the mapping. It may be, but.
But even they have, those have been exposed now.
Right.
I get your point.
You're kinda stuck in that group unless you redo it to bring a third party in. No offense.
So honestly, we should have never.
I think you gotta put them all back in.
Yeah, we've been on it.
Honestly, we should have never had, I mean, they did a great presentation, but honestly, they shouldn't have been put on the agenda in the first place if.
As long as they didn't give their quote, I think.
But, and that's what I'm saying too, is if we go with rebid this thing out for another thirty days today and then we end up going with someone who's already placed a bid, to me, that's just counterintuitive. Why would we not already take one of the bids and sort of put it out?
They, they weren't on the agenda. They came as guest speakers.
They're not on the agenda, but they're here tonight.
No, I'm talking about the first group.
The first group?
Yeah, they came, they were part of the groups that submitted a bid though. On the agenda, really.
But they already submitted a bid though.
In addition to that, you haven't invited all the others that, that submitted a bid either. So, I mean, I'm just, I mean, I know y'all feel differently than I do. I'm just trying to follow the policy and do what I think is legally right.
Yeah, but if you go ahead and start a whole new bid process, like I said, you could go back with the ones that's already placed a bid and go with them.
There were companies who did not even bid on that because of the lack of clarity and un, lack of understanding of what we were truly looking for.
We had a good many companies that bid on it.
We had four. We had four, but we had others that didn't. And, and one of them was a pretty high ranked, former high-ranking guy at the DOT. His company did not bid on it because of the scope was not clear to them, the ambiguity. But we've got a, a defined thing here and that's, that's why I said what I said. If we're not gonna follow our policies, we need to change them.
But a service has to be bided out?
That's what the policy says. Depending on the purchase amount.
I'm, I'm talking about a service.
I don't know the policy. It didn't say service, but it obviously don't have discretion.
That we could do, same.
My problem is that it's already been put out for bid and you already have open bids. And when I said earlier that that was a greatly enhanced scope, y'all very clearly that it was broken down into sections. So if this section's already been bid on, we're just gonna reject all of those and then take someone that can come in cheaper and not.
We pretty well rejected all of those bids. I mean, we didn't take one.
So if we're gonna take another quote, then we give everybody an opportunity to come back. Hey, we rejected your bid. Do you want to rebid it? They can either come in lower or not. But you gotta come along the same.
Even if this company is always already providing services for this county?
Then you shouldn't put it out for bid to begin with. That's what I said earlier. If you've never done it to begin with.
Terrell said that. I think we're getting way too confused here because we're.